Okay, good evening everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education to order and ask everyone to please stand for the pledge. Hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'd like to go to our public comment. I ask the district clerk. Marissa Friedrich from Upper Brookville. Just as a reminder, we do keep to three minutes. The district clerk has the timer. One moment. Okay, we're gonna keep it on the phone. Thank you, we're so sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. On Friday, September 2nd, we received an email from administration regarding the district's emergency planning guide. While I appreciate the information laid out, upon review of the details, as a parent, it raised several questions and concerns. Most concerning and troubling is the evacuation section of the guide. In light of recent events in the current climate, there are some points that should be clarified by administration. Under what circumstances does this district envision use of an evacuation? Understanding the sensitive nature of certain emergencies, and without disclosing too much information for security purposes, the district should provide some idea of the evacuation site's location. How far would it be from the school? Within the community? The county? Fifteen minutes away? Two minutes away? Hours away? How will the children be transported to the site? What details can be provided on the evacuation site in terms of the size of the site, as well as the facilities contained therein? Will it be able to accommodate possibly hundreds of children without much notice? What about children with special needs, dietary restrictions, special medical situations? I only see mention of a plan of action to evacuate students with disabilities. What does that mean? If a child has special circumstances or documented disability, is the plan communicated with the parent? Who will be monitoring the children at the evacuation site? These are just a few of the questions that come to my mind. Moving on to the shelter heading, it states, quote, "The district is prepared to shelter students as long as necessary," end quote. What does that mean, and by what means? Again, many of the issues I raised earlier apply here as well. Is the school prepared to shelter students? What does "as long as necessary" mean, et cetera? Then, under the heading, what kind of emergencies does the school district's emergency plan address? It is very surprising to see medical emergencies including serious contagious disease, accident or illness of a student or staff member listed as a possible emergency. Exactly which scenario or scenarios is included there? A final point, the guide states, "Emergency planning drills are required to take place." As one has not yet occurred for this school year, the lockdown drills were not actually physically taking place during the last school year. Children sat at their desks while being told of what to do during a lockdown, or they were told to continue doing their schoolwork. I hope that this does not continue into the current school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrich. Okay, that concludes our public comment for the beginning portion of the meeting. This time, we'll go into our student report. I'd like to welcome President of the Student Government, Olivia Del Tato, and Vice President, Margaret Kubler.
Good evening all. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight as we report the events that have been happening in these past few weeks within our community. It has been a great start to the 2022 to 2023 school year, as students came back to school on Thursday, September 1st. With a couple of new faces, it was great to have everyone back together again in a close to normal setting. Spirits are high and students are eager to start getting back into a normal routine and ready to start the school year off strong. The staff is thrilled to be teaching again and welcome students with open arms.
Over these past few years, the school environment has been somewhat abnormal. But it is the goal of the student council this year to bring the school back to full normalcy. As we plan to bring back traditions such as safe Halloween and pumpkin painting for all students. While also introducing new traditions such as a volleyball tournament for all students and staff in addition to the homecoming dance, which will be held this Friday from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. In addition, we seek to unite the whole community through holding athletic clinics uniting both varsity athletes and young athletes. And we seek to build connections throughout the district through a variety of bonding activities throughout this year. Allowing students to become well acquainted with members of their community.
This week was the start of Spirit Week as we prep for our big varsity football game against Lawrence this Saturday at 2:00 PM. Monday is Adam Sandler Day, Tuesday is Country vs. Country Club Day, Wednesday is Anything But a Backpack Day, Thursday is Under the Sea Day, and Friday is Go Green Day. It is a great way to start off the school year as everyone is coming together in spirit to support one another. Each high school grade has been working tirelessly on their float, which will soon be judged, and the crowning of the best float will be named this Saturday. Each grade is beginning to decorate their respective hallways, which will be judged this Thursday. All high school teams have been meeting to decorate their banners, which provided a great opportunity for teams to bond. These events provide an opportunity for individuals to grow closer in the beginning of a new school year.
Many students have been working hard prepping for college. Some students have been taking standardized tests throughout the summer and plan on taking some in the upcoming weeks. Seniors have begun scheduling meetings with their guidance counselors to discuss their stance on the college application process. Within the next few weeks, there will be multiple individual college visits and fairs offered by the school. Overall, students are eager to start the year on a great note.
The fall athletic season is in full swing here at Locust Valley, where some student athletes began training in the last week of August to prepare for their season ahead. The teams are looking strong and the student body is excited to see how far they will go. This past Friday, the Falcon Fest was hosted, where sixth graders completed a variety of games hosted by the physical education staff, in addition to some student leaders. It was a great event unifying the grade as we start the school year.
It's great to be back in school, where the environment is very inviting and positive as we look to start the year off on a good note. We'd like to thank the board, the administration, the staff, students, and community for making the start of this full year a great success.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now go into the superintendent's report. I'll hand it over to Dr. Graham, our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. I wanted to just take a moment first to address the concerns that Ms. Friedrich had brought up about the district-wide safety plan and some of the information that was sent home. We do consult with the New York State Police, with the local police, Department of Homeland Security, and for obvious reasons, I think you even alluded to them, there are certain pieces of information that we can share and others that we cannot. Every district develops a district-wide safety plan. That was developed over the course of last spring. It was posted on the website and presented at a public board meeting. And then there was a 30-day comment period for concerns, questions, that kind of thing. And then the board adopts that policy following that. And then the district-wide safety plan is then supported by building-level safety plans. So there's a building-specific plan for every school in our district. But I'd be certainly happy to talk to you further if you want to give me a call or shoot me an email, and we can talk about it further, okay? With respect to the superintendent's report tonight and things that are taking place throughout the school district, I do want to take a moment and recognize and thank our facilities, maintenance, and custodial staff for their work over the summer to prepare the buildings and grounds for the opening of school. The board and I had the opportunity to tour our facilities just before the opening of school, and I have to say that our facilities are truly in amazing shape, and I thank Eric and his team, and everyone who worked so hard over the summer to get our buildings ready. On the 31st of August, we did welcome the entire staff back for a day of celebration, recognition, and inspiration. And this year, we had a speaker come in to meet with our entire staff, a gentleman named John Paul Gonzalez. And he met with staff to explore the idea of being all-in for our students regardless of our role in our schools. John Paul happens to be a high school social studies teacher in New Jersey, who's spoken with employees of Fortune 500 companies, with professional sports teams, including the New York Giants, and school teachers and staff across the United States. And you could check out John Paul and his message on YouTube. And certainly, I felt a tremendous amount of great energy in our schools during that day, and our staff left the day, I think, really ready and charged for the school year. On September 1st, we welcomed our students back for the year. It's been great to see students back in school without any of the restrictions that we saw during the past three school years. And in fact, I met with both Olivia and Meg and Nice Job Girls with your report this evening. And they felt that there's really a nice vibe throughout the middle school and high school amongst students and staff, and we look forward to continuing that vibe for the rest of the school year. You may have heard that we engaged in a contract with Aramark for our food services program. And the feedback that we have received from our students and staff is that they're very pleased with the menu of offerings in our cafeterias. And certainly, we want to thank the board and the administration for all of everyone's hard work and focus on that. We're restarting our committee work related to the profile of a graduate at this time, in which we're reviewing the attributes that our community identified as shared attributes that we all value for our graduates. And we look forward to presenting this information at a public meeting probably in December. Additionally, and there's a lot going on, additionally, we'll be sending out some information on our pre-K program later this week. Currently, we are looking to start the program on January 9th of this school year, so it'll be a half-year program this year. And we anticipate one class at BP and another at AMP, with the potential for some spots at partnering community-based organizations. And we still are doing some of that work internally, and we'll have further information going out to the community as we continue. Next Wednesday, the 21st, there will be another board meeting. It will be a public work session. And we added a number of work sessions this year as a part of the board's hope to have additional presentations on curriculum-related areas. And next week's presentation and discussion will be, I guess, did I exceed my three minutes? Next week's presentation and discussion will be an overview of our special education programs. And the meeting will take place here in this room at 7:30 PM next week. And lastly, very exciting news, we invite all of our students and staff to join us in wearing Falcon gear or Falcon green for a Falcon Friday this week. This is also part of the Spirit Week related to homecoming. Homecoming, as Olivia and Meg mentioned, activities kickoff with the in-school pep rally on Friday, a high school dance Friday evening. And on Saturday, we have the parade at noon, which starts at Center Island. The rededication of the Fred Smith
One thing that we did discuss was our BOSI's program and how we can work to really kind of de-stigmatize alternate career paths for our graduates. And I know that our guidance department currently is doing some really great work connecting the school with the community. We would love to see even more. And, you know, one of the topics that came up was that a lot of these careers, whether it be in technical trade, where you used to be able to leave high school and go right into these trades, now you need a degree for a lot of them. And what we can do as a school to, you know, support and give them the right coursework to make sure that they're on their way to getting the degrees that they need to go into these technical careers. So we also have our special education presentation, which will be the first, as Dr. Graham mentioned, next week, and we hope to plan for additional presentations throughout the year. We're hoping to cover as many topics as we can and get as much information out to the public as possible. And I believe that covers it.
Thank you very much. Okay, under the Facilities Committee, as reported under Dr. Graham's report, the Board of Education took their annual tour on Tuesday, August 30th. It is our statutory responsibility to tour all of the facilities, all the school buildings, so the board did do that. And some of the things that we did see were the reimagined spaces that are in our libraries at both LVI and BI, complete with flexible furniture, and just more inviting spaces for the children. Also, the elementary classrooms with air conditioning, fitted now with the air conditioning system. So a lot of the renovations, a lot of the upgrades have been going on, and I did speak with Eric this afternoon, and we're continuing a lot of those projects, the electrical upgrades project here at the middle school, high school, et cetera. So that is our facility report for the evening, and we'll slide right over to the Policy Committee. Vice President Marchand.
Thank you. Policy is scheduled to meet next week on the 21st prior to the work session.
Thank you. The next two committees, Professional Development and Board Training and Public Relations and Communications. Trustee Steele does apologize for his absence this evening, and he sends his best regards. I'll now ask if there are any other reports from the Board of Education for this evening.
I just want to make a quick note about our Health and Wellness Committee. I serve as our liaison, and I just wanted to give them a big thank you. We've gotten rave reviews, K-12 for our lunch program, and our Health and Wellness Committee has worked tirelessly, so I really just want to give them some kudos for just putting our children's health first and trying to get us some great lunch.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any other reports from the board table?
No reports, just to remind everybody that this Saturday is homecoming and that there is a parade that starts at Center Island at 12 o'clock and goes through Bayville and then Locust Valley and ends at the school, and to line the streets, because it's really a wonderful thing. All the grades really work really hard, and especially this year, they only had two weeks to get the floats going, so they really work hard, and it's really, really something special when they're able to go through the streets and see them lined with their community cheering them on. So just get out there and support the parade, and then come down for the rededication and support the team on Saturday.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any unfinished business this evening. I'll ask if there's any new business off the floor. I have nothing on the agenda. Okay. We'll now move into the consent agenda. I'll ask if there's anything that anyone would like to discuss specific on the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that a board member would like to pull to act on separately? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented in this evening's? Trustee Schaefer? Second, Trustee Deltato. Any questions? All in favor? So moved, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into public comment. Do we have any public comments? No. Okay. Next order of business, before we do go into our executive session or entertain a motion for exec session, I also want to congratulate the district on putting their best foot forward and getting started in the school year. The buildings have truly come alive. We want to thank, and just echo what Dr. Graham had said about our facilities, our amazing facilities team across the district that works very hard over the summer, the hot summer months to prepare the learning spaces, get everything in tip-top shape and order, ready for the children. Also, our staff, our teachers for preparing, our support team, our clerical, our bus drivers, everyone just really putting their efforts in and getting ready to get all the children into school. It's a tremendous undertaking, so on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank all those. We also thank the parents, who I'm sure are excited to get the kids, little ones, back into the classroom, but we thank you for your ongoing support and commitment to our mission. With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion for the board to go into executive session to discuss personnel and litigation issues of a particular person. Do we have a motion? Trustee Vasiliou on a second. Trustee Schaefer, all in favor? So moved. The board is now in executive session. Thank you, and get home safely.